In the meeting, with the approval of the minutes from our October 20th meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections to make to these minutes. If not, we can have a motion to.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from.
October 20.
Thank you.
From October.
A second.
Oh, is it fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Willis, you do your report.
So I am filling in for Michelle, moving forward for the town administrators' report. This is a summary of what we've been talking about. So at the November 17th meeting, we had two bids that were brought before the council. There's now an ice removal contract bid that we received and with the council action, the motion was approved to award the contract to Bay Country Contractors for the term of December 1st, 2025 through December 1st of 2027, with the option for two, two initial, for two additional, two-year renewals. That's the mouth, not full. We did get two bids in, but after looking at the two comparisons, the Jay Brown Excavation came in a little bit lower on the hourly rate. However, there is a cost to training a new contractor. And with the, you know, snow and ice removal, we felt comfortable sticking with Bay Country moving forward. So they approved that decision. And then this stormwater management improvement contract. There were three projects initially proposed, Academy Hills, Single Tree, and one off of Camilla Drive. Due to the total estimate of over $100,000 just for Camilla, the decision was to postpone that project after I-2027, so we can plan it a little better, and to award the contract to Rainbow Construction for $66,643 for the other two projects, Academy Hills and Single Tree. So we're going to be looking at moving forward with those. We discussed the public art master plan and how that's progressing. We did get approximately 100 survey responses, so we were very happy with that. That's rare to get that many responses. So the contractor is working to get that initial draft ready. And then we'll move forward with additional public meetings and information for the public on that. We're hoping to have everything, or we need to have everything finished by February with an approval due to the grant application that we received for that. So hopefully in December, January, we'll have the kind of final drafts and everything moving forward. We did install four radar speed limit signs. One is on Leonard's Grant Parkway by Captain Walther Francis Duke School. Another on Washington Street across from Father Ranger White School, on Fenwick Street coming into town, and then one on Washington Street on War Hill. We also briefly talked about the wastewater treatment plant expansion is advancing and moving forward. We did get a little bit of delay with emptying of Boone and moving forward. But now if that is done, we can hopefully get that concluded quickly. And then the new water tower and well projects are on schedule and expected to be done by February. That's the Meadows Town Run Phase Two that GHD and our contractors are working on getting those finalized. And that, that sums up the town council report. Anyone have any questions for me?
Okay, then we'll move on to new business. And our first case today is 39-25 David K. and Nancy L. Hall property annexation petition. The property is Leonard Town, Maryland, tax map 32, grid 14, parcel 96, and it's 16.35 acre site. The consult owner has filed as an annexation petition to incorporate the subject property within the town boundary. And the owner consultant is requesting a zoning recommendation to the town council for the property to be zoned commercial highway.
Okay. So for the executive summary on this, on September 6th, 2025, the applicant filed their annexation petition. The site is presently zoned RPD after county zoning, and it is proposed to be zoned as commercial highway, which is the decision or the recommendation for the planning commission today. There were several preliminary constraints for these that were done. Additional studies will need to be done if the property is annexed and moves forward with the actual development process. So for the time being, the property, the question before the planning commission is a recommendation on the commercial highway zoning and just moving forward with bringing the land into the town. At this point, there's no development actually proposed. So there's nothing to really look at as far as the initial development review as you would normally do under the planning commission per deal. On October 14th, the council did review this petition and provided a consensus to proceed with the annexation process. The town's comprehensive plan, that was recently updated, took into consideration the potential annexations that would be coming forward. This property was included in the municipal growth area, and it was put as a commercial land use designation. So after reviewing and talking with council, the staff did find that the commercial highway zone is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and would recommend that the commercial highway zone is proposed for the property. The annexation would need to apply for a waiver from St. Rose County if they wanted to proceed with the development of the tract within five years with it being annexed. And there is an annexation timeline included in the staff report. It won't read through everything. But at this point, we are at the presentation of the planning commission. We did send out notifications and ads and legal notices for the public hearing that is scheduled for December 8th with the town council. So that is open to everyone to provide comments and questions or considerations. So the staff has determined that the proposed annexation petition and zoning designation is in compliance with the 2025 comprehensive plan. We recommend that the planning and zoning commission review the documentation and provide a recommendation to the commissioners to proceed with the commercial highway zoning designation for parcel 96. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Is also here, if you have any questions on the zoning.
Sir, I just wanted to, not only did we do the mailings, but we also posted the property as well. So according to the zoning ordinance.
The county needs to take a look, and needs to approve commercial highway, is that?
They need to have a piece of property from outside the municipality. And when we're annexing it in, the county has to approve that or sign off on it essentially.
So they, they don't need to approve the annexation itself, but what they can do is they can hold up the development of the property for five years based on the zoning category. So that is the, they can't say, you know, you can't annex that. But they can say you have to hold off for five years. That's the, the one caveat that's in the state law.
Okay. There's probably some reason for that. I was just wonder, I wasn't clear on why commercial highway versus, say, another commercial use like commercial business or commercial office.
With the location of it being on the outskirts of the town, currently along the front edge is within the town's municipal boundary, and those are zoned commercial highway, which is why it was recommended because it's in line with those commercial highway properties.
Right, which, are they just front highway though? This one goes way back into the rural area. So what would that look like if, say, someone wanted to develop, put, take loads back there?
No, that wouldn't happen. So the issue is, is that, first of all, it's a farmstead lot, 16 acres. They put 10.10 acres in a forest conservation area. So the only area to develop is the area out front in between the two parcels that are already zoned commercial highway. And that's why they're seeking the commercial highway.
So most of it then is preserved.
Yes, I did a little bit of drawing here. I don't know, I can break it up, but, so I did a bunch. So all of this area here is all forest conservation.
Oh, okay, so I went clear on that.
Right, and so the only part that is not in forest conservation is just this front piece right here.
Okay, that makes sense.
Now, there is a 20-foot wide sliver that goes back, but this is where the mound test perks were done. And so this has been reserved out for septic only, okay? They can't build in there because it's a septic reservation area. So, but when they do get, if they get approval and recommendation and go through this whole process, they will be able to at that time hook up to town water and sewer too. So they won't need that area back there. So the proposed use says "commercial auto services", but there's no real detail to that.
Right. What was back there?
Currently, there's just a garage built on the property. Is there ever used for anything?
Well, it's a approximately 40 by 80.
I saw.
Building, yeah, with a.
Just a private.
Yeah, it's just a private building. It's not utilized to anything that I'm aware of. I wouldn't be aware of it because right now it's not in the town, so I would not have done a review.
Well, the road that's going in there now, that goes past that.
Yes.
And then goes back to the house.
That's correct.
Now, the house is not on this property.
No.
So how would those people get to the house?
They'd still use the easement. There's a 30-foot access easement.
Okay, so it would go right through all that.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, then, but that's not a very big road. Is there room for a normal road?
Well, they have a 30-foot area of access. So again, they're not asking for development issues or questions at this point. So I really hypothetically, I, I wouldn't know how to answer that unless they presented some sort of plan to me. 30-foot access easement is a legitimate width for access to that piece of property.
When they did come forward with development, they would need to meet all of the minimum criteria regarding the forward approval.
I guess my question, I questioned the fact that it's commercial highway, because there's a lot of things that can go in under commercial highway. And if there's not a lot of room for everybody to get in and out, plus the other thing is how much traffic is that going to?
At the time of development, they would need to do the traffic studies and.
Have to do a traffic study.
Right, especially since there's no left-hand turn going out of that property.
And I think the only difference between commercial highway, and I brought the ordinance with me.
Okay, I would know that.
Is it really, I mean, there might be some nuances, but it's really the automotive part is really the only difference in the two zonings.
But see, I can't imagine something like the tractor supply going back there because what, that's too much traffic.
Well, again, I, I, there's no way for me to address the use of that right away until I had a site plan. I mean, certainly if, if, if a tractor supply came and they said, we're going to put this on here and I'm going to, I'll make a comment saying, well, wait a minute, you need the minimum requirements for an entrance. You, you might not have that at this point, you know? So, I mean, they would have to address a lot of things. Site distance for the speed limit, a bunch of things.
Would need to be reviewed by the state highway administrator.
Correct.
So yeah, anything that they propose would need to be in compliance with not only the town code, but any access requirements by state highway administration. So that would all be part of the review process.
But if we annex it as commercial highway, then, you know, we're limited to what, I mean, what we can and cannot say can be there. And it just seems to me that that's not a very good commercial site.
Well, I would submit that, and, and not, I don't, I don't really advocate one way or the other, but I would say that our current zoning ordinance and the rules that we have for addressing entrances sizes, with the requirements for utility easements, all those things, you, you, you'd want to know that your ordinance is going to work for you to make sure that all those adequate things are presented at the time of a site development. So, you know, it's, it's, and we would have to go by that. Planning staff would have to review it based on the ordinance and the requirements of those particular things in a design.
We wouldn't put the central business zoning category on this piece of property because the CB zone is really meant for the downtown, downtown area. So that isn't applied outside. The commercial highway is the closest and best zoning classification for the area and in the proximity of the existing commercial highway. Can you talk about the ownership of parcel 1? I think they might make it all clear. Yeah, so the, Michelle Hall does own the property directly to the front along the existing highway. I don't remember how many acres that one is, but it's currently zoned commercial highway. So that would be.
Is that, is that this one and this one?
No, just the one, the last one.
This one, or this one?
That one there, yeah. So I, I'd venture to say it's probably a gray rail six acres.
That he could fuse those at some point.
Well, he would have to do certain things again, to zone it, to combine them or whatever, but.
Did we, did we talk about this in the comprehensive? I remember this one.
Yes, it was in there.
This one came up as well?
Yes. There's a lot of challenges environmentally. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to talk, but. There's a lot of challenges environmentally on the pieces he already owns. And so, I mean, you have the same issues on the other ones, so. But I think the intention is just to have it all kind of as one.
So if you look at the record plat that was provided with that, you'll see on that record plat that the entire property is hatched with environmental issues that would need to be either knocked out of wetlands or soil types or all kinds of different things. And matter of fact, that plat also, when they put that plat on record through the county, they actually carved out a small construction easement around where that existing, I'm just going to call it a pole, pole yard for garage, big garage. So they actually carved that out. So again, all those environmental issues as Michelle brought up would all need to be addressed. And not, not only from Leonard Town, but around Department of Environment, Department of Natural Resources, and you mentioned state highway, soil conservation district. All these people would have to approve of it.
Yeah, the, due to the constraints on the property, you're not going to get a big commercial enterprise in that vicinity, so.
Well, that's why it begs the question as to why not commercial business or office?
The commercial business, as I mentioned, is only applied to the downtown area.
Okay, only applied there.
Yes.
So there are, okay, because commercial office is outside downtown, but businesses.
Commercial highway.
Yeah.
So you, so you typically take on the surrounding properties, if you will. I mean, we did it on Cedar Lane, you know, the Cedar Lane, for another parcel we brought into the same category. But you try to generally make them contiguous all the way down the strip rather than have one odd one in the middle or something like that.
You don't, you don't recommend spot zoning, that's what that would be called. So since everything else in that area is commercial highway, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, it is commercial highway, but then there is an office there. I mean, that's where the dental office is.
Well, medical office and office buildings and clinics are permitted in the commercial highway district.
But we can't say that that's what would have to go into a commercial highway.
It's whatever permitted uses are required.
I mean, I could, I could see something like that back there that wouldn't take a lot of, you know, like if you have a business where you've got a lot of people coming in, a retail business I'm speaking, is different from if it's the amount of profit that you have if it was driven office. So I guess that's a battle we would have to fight when they come up.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if, if it was to, if they were to submit a site development plan, you folks would have that opportunity to review it and communicate your concern. But honestly, we don't know, we're just here about zoning is only. So, and again, the only other, the only thing that really in addition to, that goes away between this would be the automotive services. And I think there's one other, but, I mean, pretty much they can do all these things in a commercial business too, so. And the other part of it is, is that, I don't mean to keep going back to that, but all the other properties around it are commercial highway. And the way the ordinance and the comprehensive plan is written, you kind of sort of have to bring them in as like.
It makes a lot more sense now that I understand better about the back part, not being.
And even the part on the side, all the part, nothing that, that goes along the houses on Maple. That, none of that can be developed.
No, matter of fact, the, the property that backs up to those houses is all forced conservation.
Okay, okay, well, that, then, you know, that.
That's 10.10 acres of forced conservation.
All right, all right, that makes a lot more sense.
And matter of fact, when it's in forced conservation, it is extremely difficult to get it out. I mean, it's, it's, yes, I've, I've done a couple when I was not at the town and it was, we had to mitigate one for one, and then they had to, in fact, pay an in lieu fee also. So they had to replace what they were taking out plus a paying in lieu fee. It was very expensive, very costly.
And that was probably, that was done as part of.
That was in the county, not here in the town.
Yeah.
Yes, so probably a big difference there.
All right. You haven't heard anything from the people that live in the house.
No, and they will have the opportunity to speak on December 8th at the town council public hearing. So we did post those notices.
Yeah, yeah, we see it every day when they go.
So that, that will be the opportunity for anyone to come and speak and provide any, any comments that they may have.
Okay, because I'd, I'd be interested to hear what they had to say. Because it's sort of almost in their front yard.
Yeah, that'll definitely be part of the public agenda.
Well, I guess.
Any more questions?
No. I don't know, what do you think? I guess we, we could, if we're going to add, if we're going to annex it, we have to annex it with that.
Well, yeah, you guys are only making recommendations for the zoning. That's, that's the only thing.
I know, we're, we're. And then, and if we recommend it or don't recommend it to the town council, they're going to do, that's who it goes to, right?
It does go to the town council, yes.
And so it'll be their decision to make on the annexation time.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I think because it's like zoning, I'm, I'm comfortable with it because it matches the thing, as long as the back part stays the way it is. And you said it will. Then that's the important thing. He just don't want to see a chain reaction of commercial highway on rural preservation that just keeps on going. Add infinitum down five.
Yeah, I thought these maps were so small, it was hard to tell. And maybe if I had known where the forest preservation was actually happening, I wouldn't have been quite as concerned about it. Because I just couldn't imagine things being built.
Yeah, the, the, you're absolutely correct, Jean. The exhibit that was sent, now, if you have a PD, so, so let me just say this first. If you're ever in that position and you want to come into the office, and I can blow them up, you know, pretty big. So I would be happy to do that. Just when you start doing that, it, it just sucks a lot of memory out of your emails and stuff. So I try to give them where they're.
Yeah, well, I don't really have a computer that's working.
But you come see me and I'll have.
All the time anyway, it works when I want to.
I know, as we kind of talked about before the meeting, we can certainly start utilizing the televisions here for visual aid, so we can make sure that we have those exhibits ready for, for session.
Do you want to make a motion?
Shall I?
Go ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the CH zoning designation request for parcel 96 in accordance with the 2025 comprehensive plan. One second.
All of us in favor?
My next case is 40-25 Aniston Johnson Anthony and Johnston Property Annexation Petition. The property is in Leonard Town, Maryland, tax map 41, grid O1, parcel 235, 52.18 acres and site parcel 266, 3.21 acres. The consultant owner has filed an annexation petition to incorporate the subject property into the town municipal, municipal boundary. The owner consultant is requesting a zoning recommendation to the town for parcel 235 to be zoned planned. Unit development HUD and the owner consultant for parcel 266 is recommending, is requesting a zoning recommendation to the town council that be zoned residential, single family.
Okay, thank you. So yes, what is the annexation petition in total? There's a little over, there's 52.1 acres on parcel 235 and 3.21 acres on parcel 266. Parcel 266 is insisting residential, single family dwelling. The reason that they would be brought in is because the wife would create an enclave with the other property coming into the town boundary. So they need to be brought in with a proposal for parcel 235. So currently, both properties are zoned RL, that's residential roof density under the county's regulations. And they are, as, as mentioned, looking to zone parcel 235 HUD with the five dwelling units per acre. And parcel 266 would be RSF, just because it already has a single family dwelling on the property. So they, again, with any future development, the property will have to undergo a full reprocess and with the HUD zoning that was a little bit more involved as I have been made aware due to their guiding documents. On October 14th, the council did review the petition and provided a consensus to proceed with the annexation process. During the comprehensive plan update, the site, both sites were included in the future growth area. And they did have a recommendation of residential and/or HUD for the future reuse now. This property is also going to the town council on December 8th for its public hearing. This property has been posted in all of the notices and ads published by required by code. The staff has determined that the proposed annexation petition and zoning designations are in compliance with the 2025 comprehensive plan and recommend that the planning and zoning commission review the documentation and provide a recommendation to commissioners to proceed with the planned unit development HUD zoning designation, parcel 235 and the RSF or single family zoning designation, parcel 266. We will know that there is a typo in the treaty recommended motion. Parcel 166 should say 266, so my apologies on that, not mentioning that.
I think I fixed it on their hard copies.
Does anyone have to answer any questions that we have?
This was a little more straightforward. I understood what was going on more than this one. Did they not have the HUD things in the county? Is that where, was that only in town?
Well, theirs is like elderly, so.
Yeah, they, they have them, they're just a little different. This was part of the growth area that, that the county had designated as an area where the town could grow, yes.
Has anybody else had any questions?
So it's probably going to become a housing development at some point?
Uh, maybe, yeah, I mean, you know.
Due to the, yeah.
The, the HUD, yeah, would say that, so, yes.
And this is the kind of thing, it seems like with the timing, because, what's it called? Tudor Farm, once these other ones are filled out, Tudor Farm's going to build up, then this would be something that kind of happened after that, more than likely.
Probably on the same timeline.
Is, um, do we know anything about the property adjacent to it with the cemetery right there?
There are none. Go ahead.
Okay, yes. You're the adjacent property? Do you guys have anything, any thoughts, any comments? You're here.
We have a million. Do you want a long spiel or do you just want to say a 44?
I think we just need to have something short today because you will have an opportunity at the hearings, open hearings to talk.
So the, I, I see that it's parcel, let me see, parcel 235, the 52.18 acres was part of our farm. We currently live on the 29.12 acres. That is between Academy Hills and where this parcel sits. I believe we're zoned agriculture, correct? We are a farm.
So you might have an underline of agricultural for tax purposes. In other words, your house area, probably one acre around your house is probably, they'll. your house area, probably one acre around your house is probably, they'll help you do that, to reduce the taxes on the property. But the actual zoning, I believe, is still RL. But what they do do, so I had a large piece of property too, and what I did is one acre of it, I put, they taxed me on the RL basis and then the remaining twenty-seven acres was agricultural to reduce my taxes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. I think we just feel like to change the zoning of this parcel, which is between what we own on the twenty-nine point one two acres and we also own an acre on the other side. To change that to PUD and put something like townhomes or something in there is pushing us off of our property. Because we have a farm and it's all part of one farm. It was divided up due to, I don't know what you would call it.
Well, we probably don't need to go into that.
Yeah, and we just feel like it's pushing us off of our property.
Okay. So yeah, we definitely recommend for the December eighth town council meeting, if you want to come and speak or provide written comments, it's absolutely fantastic.
So I would say, just for knowledge base, that the RL zoning base density is one unit per acre. However, in the county, they have the ability, whomever had that piece of property could go out and purchase TBRs. Then they could do up to five units per acre. That would be no different than what a PUD is, is five units per acre.
I mean, I, I don't know for sure, but I believe the builder wants to put townhomes there, which is so different. I mean, I could understand putting houses on one or two acres on this farming community. But part of St. Mary's County, especially all of Cedar Lane, is rural farming community. And I understand, I completely understand Leonardtown wanting to, I mean, we've been part of the, the economy. I mean, my husband owns a business in Leonardtown, my son's own a business in Leonardtown, and we would love to see the economy grow. But part of bringing people down to this area is the rural farming community. And to change all of that to townhomes all down that road takes away from that. And mainly, you know, it pushes us off our property eventually to surround us like that.
Yeah, that would definitely be reviewed during the development process, right? The PUD process, does that have a public hearing? Yeah, so during.
Planning and zoning, yeah, to town council.
Yes, so that would be another opportunity to voice concerns over the actual type of development, the type of housing that's proposed as well.
I have another, just one more thing to say. On the, the last case you just discussed, I know that you said that you wanting, wanted the zoning to be contiguous with the other zoning around it. I can sort of see that for this, but what you're doing is by changing the zoning to PUD, and again, I don't know much about zoning. But to do that is not contiguous with all of the other land around it necessarily.
Well, the property across the street, so your property is zoned RL, okay? So the only similar zoning that town has is the PUD based on the density that the RL allows. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, and then you have the, I think the property is now owned by the fire department. I can't remember what the zoning is of that though.
Wasn't that IO?
I think it's IO, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the nursing center was IO.
Yeah, but under the comprehensive plan, that this parcel along with everything kind of up Cedar Lane Road was shown as PUD or residential, so it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. If that was approved by the town council.
Yeah.
But this is not for construction, this, or anything like that, this is simply a zone.
Pardon me? It's for construction, you can rest assured of that. Say what you want.
Well, I, I have to look at it from what I'm presenting, sir.
Yeah, but you and I both know what it's for. You and I both know.
So Mr. Gertz hasn't said what he's thinking about with this property?
There hasn't been an official development plan at this point. Anything that is proposed, like I said, needs to be in compliance. But it has full, full control of the council on the planning and zoning to review and approve what they're proposing. It has a lot of additional steps even than our staff or any other seven categories. But yeah, we haven't received any official development plan at this point.
Do you know, you said, so you said RL is capable of holding five units per acre?
With purchase of TBRs.
With the purchase of TBRs.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Any idea why he would, they, they would be going RL to residential, single family for that one space?
I didn't bring the chart up, but I think the dense, the base density is less.
On that piece?
That's correct.
Got it, got it.
So RSF is four units per acre right off the bat.
Oh, is it? Okay.
For the town.
Right. Which that's already in the town, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're talking about the parcel across the street, two sixty-six?
Two sixty-six, yeah.
Well, no, it's not part of the town, yeah.
That's part of.
Yeah, so the problem, yeah, the problem is, is that the town goes all the way around him, but he's not in.
Got it, okay. I, for some reason, I thought the, that red boundary must go like that.
It goes up to his western edge, down to his southern edge, and then up his eastern edge, and then follows the road.
Interesting, okay. This feels like when we were talking about the houses over, the small homes over here.
The five.
Where.
One, two, six.
There were several people in the audience that were against it, but from our perspective, if it's meeting all the requirements, it's not, like you said, it's going to the town council, I think?
Yeah, the PUD zoning requires public hearings and full council review and approval, following the planning and zoning commission. So they have to approve the types of housing, the, you know, how everything is laid out. So it's, it's even more restrictive than going, you know, just a RSF zoning, a lot more stuff.
Is that what that was? I can't remember. That, that.
That was a perk.
Okay.
That was an infill.
Yep, yep. And then I'm guessing the one acre is kind of in this top hole right here, that's yours as well?
Yes.
Now, is anybody ready to make a motion?
I'm gonna go motion. I move to recommend approval of the PUD zoning designation request for parcel two thirty-five and the RSF zoning designation request for parcel two sixty-six in accordance with the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan.
A second.
All those in the favor say aye?
Aye. I did wanna say one thing on this. I feel for you because, you know, you prob, not be, not being in the town, you probably didn't, well, I'm assuming that you may not have known that we were doing a comprehensive plan that involves something adjacent to your properties. So maybe in the future, like, it's a long time in the future for the next comprehensive plan, but future annexation areas, anybody not in the town should be invited to at least somehow have knowledge of what's gonna come there. It's really hard to get information out to people, even though we have so many ways to do it. Did you all know about?
Yeah, and the thing is, we, we basically know everybody down Cedar Lane, we've talked to everyone, nobody really knew that the town was planning to take over that hole here. The town has basically decided to develop the whole road with any property that they can grab. It just depends whether people decide to sell it.
Well, that's not the case, so.
A hundred percent.
The development district was always, the county, it was in the county's development district. Okay, I mean, but that's been, you know, I don't know when development districts were formed in the seventies. So, I mean, we didn't take any property into our possible future. There's no, there's absolutely no plans, other this piece is for sale, but that's it.
But you have that map of you wanting to take everything down.
That's just saying that it could be annexed because it was all part of the development district. So, I mean, but that doesn't mean it will be annexed. And it's not something, the people have it for sale and then we're approached about annexing it because they can't, nothing can be done with it basically. Even though it's got the development district overlay because it's, there's no water and sewer. So that's, I mean, it's not that we're looking to grow the town, it's.
Well, it is, that is what we are looking to do, but you, you told me you'd need more housing.
Well, I mean, there is a need for housing. It should be in the development district.
Right, I get it, I get it, but don't say you're not trying to, because you are trying.
Well, yeah, we don't wanna die, for sure, and you're, I don't think we have that either.
Yeah, we understand that, you understand.
I mean, you did come into a meeting about the growth area when we were doing the comp plan.
Yeah, but it would have already decided, I'm telling you.
Okay, so, I mean, that was in a pre-meeting with the committee that had been recommended.
I mean, it's just, I, like what she was saying, it's hard for us as residents all down Cedar Lane, nobody knew, nobody knew that that was.
I understand, and it's not a given that all that is gonna be developed, I mean, certainly, I mean, I know, they have to sell it, yeah.
The owners have to bring it to us, it's not like we're looking for it, they come to us actually.
Yeah, yeah, well, I know how it works.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, I think, whenever people say, oh, we're annexing something or something's being annexed, that someone has, someone, the owner, that someone, has decided they wanna sell it. And it's one of the things I find interesting, you know, when you're reading Facebook. They're angry with the town, but really, people that own private property, they do sell it. But I feel like, you know, if you are in a future plan, your property, not you specifically, it's good to know about what may or may not happen to you. And if you, you know, Michelle may already take care of that and you in the future, but, yeah.
Right, and everybody has the right to sell their land, I mean, that's, that's perfectly legitimate, you can't stop that.
No, I just like to have people's feedback before there's a problem, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, we were, we knew that eventually that could be solved, but I think our, I'm sorry, don't keep it out. It's just that it's gonna become a four-hundred-person town, I mean.
Well, I think we can go on with the meeting, close the meeting, and then if you want to do that, you can. Our next business is our review of the monthly in-house permits for October, if anybody had any questions about any of those. If not, then we have a motion for adjournment. I make a motion to adjourn.
I did have one question.
Oh, sorry.
Um, this applicant, American Eagle, it just kind of caught my eye because that's a clothing company. But in, it just seems strange on whimsical court, it could, like, can anybody put whatever they want as a, as an applicant name or?
It's an electrical company.
Is it? Okay, cool, cool, I just hadn't seen that.
Yeah, they're Maryland registered by some, um, electrician.
Nice, nice, all right, well, I need an electrician, so.
That was your question?
Yep, thank you. Is he? Oh, cool.
If you're the same.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's.
So I'm hoping, I just have to.
But I, I realize that he has.
There we go.